Thank you everybody for showing up to the public forum today, Monday 22nd. It's just gone a couple of minutes past, I'd like to bring the meeting to order. I'd like to start with apologies, we have an apology from councillor Staines and I'd also like to put that in for councillor Thompson, I'm not sure whether he'll be late or whether he's not able to attend at all. Are there any other further apologies?
I'll second it.
Okay, move councillor Noon, and who was the second, sorry councillor Stevenson. Confirmation of the agenda, everyone happy with the look of the agenda? Councillor Stevenson moves, councillor McEvish second. Confirmation of minutes, that's the set from the 4th of March.
Do you put the motion?
Oh sorry, yes, let's put the motion for confirmation of the agenda. All those in favour?
Aye.
Good. Confirmation of the minutes, 4th of March, everybody happy with the minutes?
I'll move.
Move councillor Butcher, seconded.
Yep.
Councillor Stevenson, all those in favour?
Aye.
Sorry?
Map is arising from the minutes.
Ah, map is arising from the minutes?
We've got a report back on the Voice of Rhode that councillor Ackland and councillor Noon have resolved for us.
Mister Chairman, I'll give a quick update just to satisfy councillor Hudson's intrigue. Councillor Noon and I spent a couple of hours on site with Mister Baines and we've got a list of things to investigate, I think 21 bullet points in total. And so it's going to take a little bit of time, but that book is underway, that list has been compiled right now and there'll be answers back to Mister Baines directly and we can report back to this forum in six weeks' time.
So Mister Baines will be advised independently?
Yes, he will.
And then, but you're also advising the 21 issues back here as well?
True.
Okay. Is that to your satisfaction councillor Hudson? Very good. The public section of today's meeting, we have four speakers. The process generally is for a speaker who is speaking on their own behalf to have five minutes to speak, if you're speaking on behalf of a group you have 10 minutes. We don't want to be too rigid about these things but we do need to get through the agenda. It's good to see so many people here in the gallery. I think it's almost a record for a while. And the first person on the public agenda is Bradley Kurnau, I hope I pronounced that correctly, for the Ararua Conservation Group, as you're representing a group. 10 minutes for Bradley. Is Bradley up?
Thank you. Mister Chair, you may just need to remind everyone to use the microphones to ensure that the people recording are able to pick up.
Um, excuse me Mister Chair, we've got some spare chairs here, can some of these people that are standing like to come and sit at the back here?
Anybody wanting to sit a little closer or get a better view, the chairs are available there, feel free.
Take this one over.
And if you can keep the microphone within a very short distance of your mouth, your chances of being heard are much, much better.
Okay, thank you, how's that?
Very good.
Could I please introduce myself, my name is Bradley Kurnau and I live in this small town which is behind me here. Is it possible to have the lights dim slightly?
That's not working.
Okay, perfect, thank you. I live in this small town here called Ararua, which most of you all know, and so do a lot of people here that are listening to this 10 minutes today. I'm a member of the Ararua Conservation Group and we're now a lead entity as well, we're the Ararua Conservation Trust, but we're just waiting to see whether we'll get charitable trust status or not. So I live in the small town there and the yellow-eyed penguins live in this area here and the royal albatrosses live over the harbour and mud crabs and animals like that live here on the salt marsh and at the end of the spit are the sea lions. The Ararua ecological area is this area in here, it includes the spit and it includes all the wetlands in this area here and the mudflats and it's a dock ecological reserve, so it's fully protected under the Conservation Act. And in fact, first point I want to talk about today is our concerns for these beautiful wild animals, the New Zealand sea lion, who are critically, critically endangered, they have the same threat status as the kakapo or the takahai. And we're just really concerned as local Ararua people that the new wharf proposal in fact is in their territory, it's in their home. And we're worried for Dunedin's ecotourism future, that they'll be scared away. But also from our own local perspective as well, that at the moment we can go down to the end of the spit and we can talk to them and we can watch them play and it's very low level interaction. But what we're really concerned about is the possibility that a new wharf, if it doesn't have controls placed on it, will mean that tourists will come off the end of the wharf into the sea lion nesting area and disturb these animals and they will simply leave. So when we all arrive in Dunedin Airport in the future and we have that beautiful Cadbury as we're waiting for our bags, we see there there's a chocolate sea lion and a chocolate yellow-eyed penguin, or to have a thriving tourism industry, we actually need to provide space for these animals, we need to make sure that they are fully protected. And there he is, looking incredibly cute. And here's a picture of the sea lion next to the old wharf and as you can see there the old wharf doesn't have anything much left under those piles, it really is an old structure. And thinking about the old wharf, 10 years, 10 years ago it hasn't been maintained for over 10 years, we know that this council owns that wharf. And we really wonder whether, because sea lions have only been here for under 10 years and we think that they came along and discovered this beautiful quiet area that was tucked away from all the noise of the modern world and they started breeding and they had a couple of pups away from the hustle and bustle of the world and we don't think that they would have settled there if they'd had a wharf with ecotourists coming along and interacting with them, because they're a very shy animal. And we're, we're, we're very concerned that this, this is their space. And this couple has just been doing what animals have been doing all since the beginning of time. And here's a female sea lion, we've had two pups born at Ararua in the last 10 years, first pup was called Lena and she's absolutely thriving, and the second pup was called BK and unfortunately he was shot on the Otago Peninsula, which made us very grumpy. We have since planted a toto tree in his memory and his bones have been interneared Ararua. So we're really feeling like we're fighting for this animal, that its future is at stake. And here she is, Dana. And here's a big bull sea lion. And this one's got a gorgeous smile, as you can see. This fella here is actually sitting right near where the wharf will actually come down into the sandhills. And this one's having a snooze, once again you can see the wharf is pretty, pretty darn derelict. You know, we've been thinking about ways and hopefully one will be found, that we can reduce the impact of humans upon these sea lions, but that's a really, really difficult thing, because once you get into fences and viewing platforms and public toilets, do we really want that at the end of an ecological reserve? I don't think so. So the big challenge facing this council or the big challenge facing the Ararua League is to find answers to all those questions. Because if they can't be found then we won't be supporting this, this project, because we want, I take my nieces down there and they love it, they see the sea lions swimming around and future generations have the absolute right to go and enjoy the New Zealand sea lion at play. Here's another shot. Oh, this one's smiling as well. And second big question we really need to ask ourselves, this is the Ararua Ecological Reserve after it's been hooned over by vehicles, it's an incredibly vulnerable area, do we really want ecotourists seeing the mess that is the Ararua Ecological Reserve? We've been working hard with DOC for the last two years to address the issues of vehicles on that salt marsh and will continue to work closely, we're trying to get a gate at the moment. And it really, we should be doing better and we should be working together to solve this sort of problem. What we're worried about, if we have a wharf, if the roads are improved, we can't separate the salt marsh and the mudflats. And there's some more doughnuts. It's quite a heavily trafficked area too for an ecological reserve. The sea lions are fully protected by New Zealand law, the ecological reserve is a dock ecological reserve and we would expect that any proposal has to fit enough for the environment. This is how a salt marsh should look. And here's a great photo of a royal albatross. This is a black-fronted tern, swans. And we put this photo in to show defencing, there used to be fencing wires throughout the reserve but us and DOC a few years ago got together and removed the wires so that in fact animals like sea lions can be free to move around the reserve. And we'd rather see positive community plans like that for this area. And of course we have the Ararua National Bird from the Save the Ararua days, I'm too young to remember that, but there's certainly more than a few people in this room that were active in that campaign. And from what I understand, the Ararua League and other groups were very active in protecting this reserve from aluminium smelter, but we're kind of feeling that, hey, it may have the title of ecological, so let's please treat it that way. Because we're certain, we're going to be proud to our Ararua traditions and that we're going to absolutely stick up for the sea lions and all the other animals and plants that live on the ecological reserve. So there we go, after all these years, Ararua Save It is still there. Thank you.
Thank you very much Mister Kurnau, any questions from councillors? Councillor Hudson?
Was Lena named after Lena Davis?
Indeed.
Very appropriate.
Yes.
Councillor Noon and councillor Ackland?
Thanks Bradley for your, for your presentation. The question in my mind, and I have had some discussions with the Ararua League, if they are able to come up with a proposal that meets the Department of Conservation's objectives and long-term goals for that reserve, would you then be at ease in terms of what, what potentially could happen with the old wharf? Because my understanding is they want to rescue and restore the wharf and I'm not sure, you know, what can be rescued, but they certainly don't want to create any negative effect on the environment. So my question is around that DOC question, if they come up with a proposal that meets DOC's long-term plans for the area, how would you feel?
I think we'd certainly welcome a long-term plan, that would make perfect sense from us. What we're worried about is not just a few people fishing or admiring the sunset from the end of the wharf, that's a great idea, what we're really concerned about is the impact of tourism and boats in that area. So if DOC can address that issue and the League can address that issue and so can we, because we have a membrane of understanding with DOC, so we're going to be fully consulted on the process. You know, we're not us or them win or lose, we certainly want to reach some sort of understanding where the sea lions and all the other animals can be happy and perhaps users of the wharf can be happy as well, you know, we're not closed.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Ackland?
Thank you. Bradley, I'm just trying to understand that you've made it clear that these are shy animals, they need the space, they don't need people around, then you also went on to say that when people arrive at Dunedin Airport and see the photos and so on and so forth to say what we've got that they can see, how do you find the balance between allowing them and close enough to see these wonderful creatures and their natural environment without disturbance?
It is a really, a really fine line and I guess no one quite knows the answer to that, but I would imagine as, as Ararua locals looking at the sea lions we're very unintrusive, but if you have 30 people hopping off a boat, taking photos of them, then I think that's a bit more intrusive upon them. So I think it depends upon the demand for a particular area, you know, we have areas on the peninsula that are heavily fortified to protect the wildlife and we don't want to see that sort of fortification here in Ararua.
Further Mister Chairman, you showed pictures of the disturbances that happen now with our own local people, do you know how often that is and what sort of impact that has and how do we stop access to these mudflats and so on, of people wanting to do doughnuts and so on?
We've sent photos to DOC for several, for at least two years, we've met with them on two occasions, our proposal from our community was for a gate, an unlocked gate. Unfortunately we do have a sector of our community that doesn't support an unlocked gate, they just support increased signage. DOC have told us that no one has public right of access in that area, so it's just a matter of continuing to talk to DOC and the Ararua people. And perhaps after seeing those today, councillor may feel motivated to say to the area manager, hey, what's happening with that salt marsh, because it is, it's a disgrace.
Thank you. Councillor Stevenson?
Hi, I've got a couple of questions, I'll ask them and then, you know, you might be able to answer them in combination. So one, I wanted to know what your group felt about just keeping it as a ruin and what the need is for a functioning jetty that people can get on and get off, like how much is that needed? And then, you know, is the need for a jetty that's usable versus the need for the ruin and which one do you think we should be supportable?
I think with the ruin you always run the risk of people fishing off it, which they're doing now.
Yeah.
So you always run the risk of that. In terms of demand, I think there is a definite demand for people to go fishing, they love fishing with the old wharf, you know, I could see that continuing with a new wharf. I don't know how much demand for the Ararua community there would be to actually use it to bring tourists in and out, I don't know.
Okay then, so do you think it's worthwhile keeping it as a sort of a ruin that you can fish off or?
I would think so, I mean, we don't have any objection to a revamped old wharf, that people can enjoy fishing off and watching the sunset, we have no, no problems with that.
This is a docking in the?
Yeah, it's the docking of the tourist boats and the disturbance to the sea lions and vehicle access to the salt marsh that would bring, that we have the issue with.
Okay.
Councillor Butcher?
Bradley, can you go back to that first photo, please? Possible turn light flag again.
Mr, you just want to sort your microphone round?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, can you just point out with your weird little pointy thing there, where's, where's the jetty there now?
The jetty's at the end here, right at the end of the spit, you might just be able to make it out.
Oh, it's right over there, okay. And the doughnut area that you're concerned about, where's that happening?
Nah, the doughnut area is happening down in here.
Right in there.
Because you have this vehicle track which services the cribs halfway down the spit and it's wide open to anyone that wants to use it and that's when they're getting in and causing all this destruction.
So if you put a gate on, where are you thinking the gate would go?
The gate would go at the beginning of the spit here.
And the people who own the cribs will then just have a key to it?
At first, the proposal was to have it unlocked, because the compromise position with the Ararua League and DOC was that it should be unlocked and we would see how it went, whether that was enough to convince people not to go down there. If it is locked, then the Ararua locals, according to DOC, will have access to the area to use it recreationally and we will have a number to the gate and the crib owners at the end will have access as well.
Okay, are those permanent crib owners or the holidays?
Our holidays.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor McEvish.
Great presentation, thanks, wonderful.
Thank you, I just, I guess two clarification questions, the, the major concerns from the Ararua Conservation Group, or Trust hopefully, are that of the number of additional visits that might be enabled by a structure and any potential vehicle access or extension of the vehicle access through to the wharf. Is that a?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Right, if there are no further questions, thank you very much Mister Kurnau, lovely photographs and nicely presented and good to see so many people interested, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Lee?
Councillor Stevenson?
Do we think now how we want to progress this or do you want to do that at the very end, but you kind of forget after a bit?
If there is any specific action that you'd like taken?
I'd just like to have an update on what, where this project is at and about the gate and access issues, you know, I think that will give us something we can build on if we wanted to.
I don't know if there's actually officially sort of items for consideration by the Chair in this forum, is there?
Action points.
There isn't, just actions?
What action or not?
Okay, shall we do that at the end as a roundup? Or would you prefer to do it now?
Can you do it now, while it's fresh, but um?
Oh, if that's your wish, what actual, does anyone want to propose an action then? Councillor Noon?
To help councillor Stevenson, I can perhaps give an update. Council haven't received any formal proposal at this point in time. The current structure isn't safe and council have, you may have noticed in one of those photographs, have some safety netting across to avoid people accessing it.
It's not working it would seem.
Let's know that, I can't comment on that. This afternoon John Davison and myself are going to go and meet with Robin Thomas, area manager with the Department of Conservation, to talk about exactly the issues that Bradley's raised. And that's probably all I can say at this point in time, but as I say, the main thing is that council haven't received a proposal in any shape or form, this has very much been driven by the Ararua League and I know there's been a lot of discussion in the community but, and, you know, at this point, there isn't a fixed view on what the proposal will be. There are some plans floating around but there's no fixed position at this point in time and I think the appropriate thing at this stage is for the Ararua League and the Department of Conservation, who are the landowners, to have a conversation to understand what parameters the League would have to work within to achieve the sorts of rules and regulations that the department have for that particular reserve.
Okay, but given that we don't have any brief to actually instruct anyone else on what to do, the action that we could possibly have, if I could just suggest, would be to have a watching brief at this stage. Councillor Bezir?
I think it would be helpful if the League and the Conservation Group could get together because I found there's a little bit of a contradiction in the presentation as much as there were comments about the, the old wharf and in a poor state of repair and not wanting to attract more people down there, but there seems to be that the Conservation Group would support the upgrade of the wharf now. To me this, you know, that, I think it would be helpful from our point of view if the two groups got together and talked about that issue and came to some agreement, because I think from my own view there is potentially for conflict and if you upgrade the wharf and have more people going down there, that will counter what the Conservation Group is trying to do. So if we can get some feedback from both those organisations and maybe Andrew is the one to, to be able to facilitate that, I think that would be very helpful.
Any further speakers? Councillor Wilson?
This gives a very different light from the previous presentation understandably from the Ararua League, but my concern isn't, just from what Andrew just said, that I hope that he conveys that this structure which is still owned by council comes with some liabilities for council potentially, is one that isn't open forever and I think we need to consider putting some timeframes around it, because I'd hate to see it being something that they think they can raise funds for for the next three or four or five years. They've got, there was a window of opportunity but it certainly has changed my, the consideration that we put it to. In the process, when, when this came to us last, did we say approve it subject to them finding the money or did we, is it still come back to us as well?
Through the Chair, my, my understanding is that the demolition of the existing structure was put on hold until the community, in particular the Ararua League on behalf of the community to, for them to investigate options and eventually report back to council, that's roughly where it's at. In terms of the putting a timeframe on it, what I would suggest to you is that talking about a group of volunteers here trying to be proactive for their community and I accept what councillor Bezir has said, that they need to have that dialogue with the reserve group, but to put a timeframe on, I think at this stage would probably be premature because there's still a lot of work to do to actually sort out, you know, what the plan is and then to fundraise, the projected funds will obviously take time, so I wouldn't like the timeframe put on at this point in time would be my view.
I, even?
I mean, the fencing around the wharf is, it covers council's liability and the signage there to indicate that it's not a safe structure and do not climb on it, so my understanding is that council have done everything that they, that they can to protect, as I say, any liability.
Councillor Hudson?
Andrew, you said there's a sign there that said, please don't climb on it, unfortunately sea lions can't read and they are climbing on it occasionally. I just wanted to make sure that Jan Tucker, as Chair of the Community Board, is included in any of the discussions that Andrew's having, because it'll have to come back through the Charles Community Board before it comes back through to Community Development when he has his proposal ready.
Through the Chair they certainly have been invited to the, the meeting, that staff attended and myself with the Ararua League, but unfortunately either the Chair or the Deputy Chair couldn't make that particular meeting, but we certainly are keeping them in the loop.
Okay, I've moved from the Chair that we have the action, the watching brief for this, have I got a seconded? Seconded, councillor Stevenson, all those in favour?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much for that, thank you very much Mister Kurnau. And if we could move rapidly on to the Waikiki Turodeo, I've got the name of Henrietta Purvis and also Dave Marshall. If you'd like to come up.
It's not, it's not us, it's council.
Councillor?
Someone? Yeah, go closer.
It's council's committee.
No. As full as that. You're not going to use that?
Well, it's a podium. We don't almost have a podium. Thank you very much for coming to present for the forum today, good to see you here. Feel free, you're representing a group, you have 10 minutes, give it your best shot.
Okay. Hi, my name's Henrietta Purvis and I'm representing the Waikiki Turodeo Club. We're here today to respond to proposal by Carl Scott of SAFE to ban rodeos on Dunedin City Council land and to tell you the facts about our sport. Now I'm joined here today by Dave Marshall, who's on the board of the rodeo's governing body, the New Zealand Rodeo Cowboys Association, so he's going to talk first and then I'm going to talk more on a local basis, he's going to give you an overview.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you everybody for the opportunity to speak today. As Henrietta's already introduced herself, I'm South Island Club Director for New Zealand Rodeo Cowboys Association and I'm here today to ask why the Dunedin City Council want to ban rodeo from its reserves. First question I have for the councillors, how many councillors have actually banned tour rodeo? And rodeo is a blend of a performance and a contest that started in America in 1872, Australia... that started in America in 1872, Australia in 1920, and in New Zealand in the early 1950s. It started as a contest between ranch and station hands applying what they did on a daily basis, either at breaking in horses or catching calves for firebranding. It is now a sport that runs under a very strict animal welfare code. How many of you have actually ever seen or read a 32-page animal welfare code that we actually have? And it's quite easily to obtain if you just go to the MAF website. You can actually get a electronic version and there's a 32-page piece there that you can read on. There's a few things that I just, you know, do you understand what actually makes a bucking horse or a bucking bull? It's not punishment or anything like that. It's actually in its breeding. And these animals wouldn't be included in bucking strings if they didn't choose to buck. It's a strong genetic trait and animals are born to buck, they're not made. You can't make an animal buck, it's actually something that they breed off. What do you know about flank straps? A flank strap cannot magically turn placidana into a champion bucker. A flank strap is never intended to cause discomfort to an animal, nor have I ever seen any evidence of injury to a bucking animal caused by a strap. It is sheepskin lined and is done no tighter than the belt holding up your jeans. It's also like, we've heard animal prods, what do you know about animal prods? They're not used to make an animal buck, they're not used at all at a rodeo. Spurs are another thing that people have a misconception of. The rail of a spur is doubled and is not less than three millimetres in width. So it's no, it's the same thickness as a $2 coin. In bronc riding, the rails loose and it rolls across the skin, it doesn't jab into them. Horse's height's five millimetres thick and you're rolling a three-millimetre coin across it. Bull riding, the rails loosely locked and is generally used to get traction on the bull's loose fitting height. Bull's height's seven millimetres thick. A cowboy would be disqualified if he actually damaged an animal's height, so there's no cruelty in the rider. The saddles, all the equipment they use is under a very strict code from the animal welfare. During the past season, I've hosted the SPCA at several rodeos throughout the South Island. Their input animal welfare is held in high regard with their association, of which we have 850 members, and they're always welcome to attend. SAFE, they have failed to turn up. We've invited them to a southern rodeo two seasons ago. We contacted them, we asked them to come and look at our operation. They failed to turn up, they sat on the bank, they criticised, but they would not actually come and approach us and discuss it. This has more come about the Dunedin City Council and the indoor rodeo that was held in November that has actually brought this to your attention. The conditions were not ideal and it's the chance of an international rodeo being run in the stadium again is very low due to animal welfare reasons. I'll hand that over to Henrietta now.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Yeah, just for the Waikiki Rodeo Club, I'll explain what we're about. I'm a farmer rodeo contestant and I'm treasurer of the Waikiki Rodeo Club. The Waikiki Rodeo has held 49 rodeos and its 50th is to be held in 2014. We are entirely a not-for-profit organisation, which is run by volunteers who put in hours of unpaid time and it is our passion to run a great day for the community and the rodeo is a firm favourite on the local calendar. In the mid-1970s, the club was encouraged by the council of the day to move the rodeo from private land to public-owned ground to ensure continuity. Its arena and yards were built by members on an area of council land off Matanaka Drive along the shore at Waikiki. Also on that land are the bowls, tennis, pony club and rugby areas. Today, we all come under the umbrella of Easter Tago Sports, which is an incorporated society. About our club, our club has 25 active members plus another dozen or so interested locals who help out on actual rodeo day, which is nowadays held on the first weekend of February. The club is, or the day is, an awesome statement of the community working together. Over the years, the club has put back profits into the community, donating funds to rescue helicopter, local fire brigades and St John's. For the past four years, our rodeo has been named Tough Enough to Wear Pink and each year raises funds for the New Zealand Breast Cancer Foundation, or as I refer to it from now on, the NZBCF. This year, Waikiki Rodeo put on a great spectacle the week prior to the event with its Paint the Town Pink campaign, which really set the scene for rodeo day. Shops and businesses put on a fantastic display of everything pink. Our event has always been used by local organisations as a fundraiser and this continues to this day with the local play centre, school and lines gaining financially. Each year, the event attracts an excess of 2,000 people to the area. This influx brings in extra income into Waikiki and the Tough Enough to Wear Pink campaign is raising the profile of the town. There are about 250 competitors from all over the country and many come down from the North Island to compete. There is a strong family element and contestants range in age from eight years to 70-plus. Over the past four years, we have raised a total of $37,643.30 for the NZBCF. This money has been raised through sale of merchandise, barrel sweepstakes, great sponsorship and amazing local support. In a thank you letter this year to the club, the NZBCF said, "The community spirit and generosity shown towards us is deeply appreciated." In May 2012, the Waikiki Rodeo Club was runner-up in the Sport and Recreation Section of the Trust Power Community Awards for the Dunedin area. I proudly received the award on behalf of the club from Mayor Dave Cull. In February, our rodeo bucked out 50 bulls, 30 horses, had 80 barrel races and 60 roping entries. Throughout the day, they competed in front of a large happy crowd without a single injury to any animal. There was never a sign that any animal was scared or frightened in any way. We have vet reports from the last couple of years which show that all the animals are in good condition and are uninjured. We know, love, respect and have pride in our cattle and our horses. The last thing we want is for anything to happen to them. We are appealing to you not to ban rodeos in Dunedin. Thank you.
Thank you very much for both your presentations. Questions from councillors? Councillor Hudson, then Councillor McLeod.
I'm not sure whether it's for Dave or Henrietta, but we have had tabled this afternoon a letter from Sylvia Philcox alleging that bulls and horses' testicles are tied up, causing excruciating pain and the bucking effect. And in some rodeos, animals are subject to complete darkness so that they go crazy at the sight of light. And I wondered whether I could have some comment from you on...
I would like to actually meet the person and take them to the SPCA myself. No, look, there's nothing like that. A flank is never anywhere near the testicles of an animal. It is actually just behind the ribs. And I've never heard of anything like that ever happening. Or seen, or seen, no, that's definitely not a fact.
And you don't hold them in complete darkness to go crazy at the sight of light?
Definitely not, no, definitely not.
The submission from Sylvia Philcox has been attached to all of our agendas. Have you had the opportunity of seeing?
No.
Is it possible for someone to give you a copy? Sorry, the firing order for Sylvia was actually at the end, but what I'd like to do with councillor's permission is to bring it forward so that we can actually discuss all rodeo issues in one hit rather than trying to do it later. Just want a brief minute to have a look through that submission from Sylvia Philcox. No, she isn't going to present, she's...
Mr Chief, can I suggest that perhaps it's read out? Because there's obviously a lot of people in the room that don't have this paper and it's very short.
Yep, certainly.
And I'm assuming that it's appropriate to combine the two because obviously we've got people here that look at us...
We're dealing with a similar issue. So for the benefit of all those that don't have a copy, Pam's got a copy here for you. Would the council like me to just read it out? Okay, "To the citizens of Dunedin and Dunedin City Council, my name is Sylvia Philcox, I'm unable to attend the public forum. However, I'd like to bring to attention the new attraction", inverted commas, "of rodeos that may be coming into town. Rodeos involve exploiting animals and subjecting them to cruelty for human entertainment. Some people are aware of this, however, a surprising number are completely oblivious as to the ground facts and rules of the so-called sport. Specific examples are chasing infant calves that are fleeing up to 30 kilometres an hour before an instant halt by a rope. Bulls and horses' testicles tied up causing excruciating pain and the bucking effect. In some rodeos, the animals are subject to complete darkness so that they go crazy at the sight of light." The list does go on. "The potential economic gains will be trivial when compared to the amount of tourists who will be driving out of the city, creating a revenue drop in other departments. I wish for the people of Dunedin to be able to look into their hearts for this matter. Whether you are an animal lover or not, one must understand that no living being should be exposed or subjugated to this level of cruelty. I request that the Dunedin City Council look at the current petition specific to this case and reconsider bringing rodeos back into what is a wonderful city. Kind regards, Sylvia Philcox." So that's the other side of the argument. And we were in question time and it was councillor McLeod.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation. I have two questions. One is specific to your rodeo and that is the animals that are, I guess, used in or feature in the programme in Waikiki. Are they owned locally or are they transported in for the event?
Some are owned locally by farmers and some are transported in to our event by a contract.
Right, okay.
A rodeo contract.
Yeah, okay. And in terms of, Dave spoke to the difference between a community rodeo and the likes that we saw, which has really raised this whole issue at the stadium. Do you see a different, I mean, I don't know whether you attended that event or not, but perhaps would you be able to, if you do see a difference between the Waikiki rodeo and what we saw at the stadium, would you, either of you feel comfortable identifying sort of the key differences or what might be done differently in those two situations?
I guess I get the, I get the easy one. The difference, the difference of Waikiki Rodeo is we've got people competing from the age of five or six years old through to veterans, my age. It is, you have, you've got your calf ride, you've got all different events. Whereas the rodeo held at the stadium was basically an exhibit of the sport and you had an elite at the top end participating. The spectators, in my view, like to see the kids, like to see the whole, the whole field. And the animal weights, and this is something that perhaps I should have even touched on, like a calf ride has a specific weight. A calf has to be 150kg before a kid can ride it. A calf has to be over 120kg and under 150kg before it can be calf roped. For team roping, a steer has to be 270kg and greater. So like, there's a whole big category. A bronc has to be five years old before it can come into the arena. There's a whole big list of criterias which the Waikiki Rodeo Club cater for them all, whereas the other was just basically an exhibit of the top end.
The other thing is that Waikiki, as I said earlier, is a not-for-profit organisation. Our main aim is to put on a good day, showing our sport to whoever wants to come through the gate. The event at the Foreside Bar is run by Up Promoter. He's there to make money. So that's one of the basic differences. I'm probably one of the top, have been one of the top barrel racers. I was invited to compete at Foreside Bar, but for various personal reasons and for the safety of my horse, I didn't attend.
Councillor Ackley.
My question sort of tags on to that a little bit further. You said earlier that we probably wouldn't see, or it's very unlikely to see another international rodeo, indoor rodeo as we did.
The stadium wasn't 100% serviceable for the event.
Yeah, you said that the conditions weren't appropriate or up to scratch at the stadium. I was just wondering what that might be, what were the, what were the particular things that...
Without digging a hole for myself, the soil conditions were not ideal, which has a, has a big, a big effect on animal performance and animal welfare. And the animal welfare officers were very marginal.
That's the sort of thing I wanted to add, thank you.
And councillor Brown?
I'm not sure who I'm directing the question to, but my understanding of local government regulations is that the TCC has no capacity to actually ban rodeos, say, in the community. But they do have control over their reserves. And is it your request, is you wanting us to look at the fact that you were on private land and now you're on a council reserve and you've invested all your funds to put your facilities on that reserve? And if council were to make a decision not to use that reserve, you'd be very greatly disadvised?
As far as Waikiki goes, yes, they have moved, they have moved there. If the council put a total ban on reserves, that would be, Waikiki Rodeo Club would have to relocate, which would cause huge financial concerns. In fact, it would more be the end of the club.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson.
Look, I take the point with regard to the breeding issues with the horses and the bulls. The one that worries me, I think, though, is, and it is referred to in the other submission, I'm trying to imagine a sort of a 120kg cowboy being roped at 30 kilometres an hour and what that might feel like and wonder why it's any different for a cattle beast.
For calf roping in their example? For one, there aren't infant calves used. For two, there's very, the calves are 120 to 150kg, so you're struggling to actually lift it. Two, there's very, when a cowboy ropes a calf, he's disqualified if the calf leaves the ground, so the calf cannot leave the ground. So that basically answers, nobody's going to pay their entry fee of $60, $70 to compete in a rodeo and pull the calf in the air, he's instantly disqualified. So a wee bit of a knowledge about the sport basically eradicates what that person is saying.
And the sudden impact that's referred to, the, I mean, going from whatever speed they're going at right here with a 30 kilometres this ride or not, but from that to dead stop.
The cowboys have a saying, of what it is when you use your rope, it's because something to do with working your rope, you don't know how to work your rope correctly. The slack rope is taken up actually gently, it's not a bang stop. It's not like you're on the end of a chain, you've got to also remember that the horse is still going forward. So the rope's basically tight before the horse pulls, starts pulling up. So it's not that the calf's roped and running from you at 30kg and you're on a, on a post.
Yep.
The horse is going with you.
Councillor Webber.
Sir, can I ask, well, the Chair, just to help me, the event at Waikiki and other rodeos around the area, Lawrence and other places, are under the auspices of the New Zealand Rodeo Association?
Yes, sir.
And would they in general terms be regarded as community events? And would they in general terms be regarded as community events that are focused on rodeo?
Yes.
The event at the stadium, that, that, does that or did that come under the control or auspices of the New Zealand Rodeo Association?
Yes, sir.
But I sense in your conversation that there are two different ends of the scale of health, safety and all those other matters.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, sir.
Because we're probably going to go over time. Any further questions? Councillor Noon and then councillor Stevenson.
There's probably a question for Henrietta. In terms of the local event, are you able to give us an indication of the lead-in time that the local club requires to organise that event? And I think it's February, your next one will be February two thousand and fourteen. So are you able to share that with us?
Running a rodeo is sort of an ongoing procedure, process. Usually every season, we bring in upgrades to the yards or certain improvements. It seems to be a growing event. Numbers of competitors seem to be growing, so we need an extra stop. So this year, for example, we're hoping to make our yards larger, to make them more workable. So it takes a fair bit of work, so that would have been, you know, we need to be getting on with that in the winter. We don't like leaving these things to the last minute. So, yeah, it is, it is an all-round, all-year-round process, really.
So just to follow that up through the chair, you would appreciate council making some sort of call whether we were going to either pursue this discussion or not sooner rather than later to create some certainty for the club, is it?
Yep, that would be great, yeah.
Thank you.
Councillor Stevenson.
Okay, for rodeos in Dunedin, there's one out at Waikati, one out at Altrum. And the Altrum one, is that on private land or council, is it some private land?
It's on private land.
Okay. And there's one, yeah, now, what would be, would you be able to estimate the cost of relocation of your equipment back to private land? And re-establishment at all, roughly?
Yeah, I could because we've actually just priced a sort of a yard and you'd be looking in the excess of two hundred, two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand, okay. And, or the event wouldn't happen?
Sure.
Okay. And I was wondering, this is to a question to Miss Philcox, which I can't ask, Lee, but I, I'd like to see what SPCA's view is. Because I feel like to progress this, we need a cost-benefit analysis, what's the cost of doing it?
They're not, they're not here currently presenting, so I don't think that's a question we can ask.
Maybe if we could even email them and just say, like, we really need to have an SPCA view to serve them.
I can't see that as flying under the, but I don't think it falls within what we're able to do in a public forum. But if you want to do that as councillor, I don't see any problem with that.
Okay.
Councillor Wilson.
I'll just say a quick look while you're submitting on the, the report that came out in two thousand and three. The standards that you referred to, and thank you for that lead, they came out in two thousand and three. When are they due for review?
They're being reviewed today.
Oh, they're being reviewed at the moment. So my concern here is that there is an actual review happening potentially of your, and, and at the time of this review, the report quite clearly states that people submitted on banning them and getting rid of them and, and a number of other things. And so the people that are submitted to us at the moment potentially have the possibility of getting them, or submitting to the national standards through the National Animal Welfare Advisory Committee to address the issues in a different forum than, than this one at present. Thank you.
Councillor Collins.
Your event's been going forty-nine years, so that would indicate to me anyway, it's, it's well-attended and looked forward to by the local community. Is that fairly consistent each year? People look forward to the event and the, and the local people attend it well?
Generally, I, I think myself this year I've attended something like fourteen or fifteen rodeos in the South Island. The gate numbers have been up on just about all those events throughout the whole South Island. The clubs actually have to sanction for their days now. It's actually passed the sanction date for next year. So it is, it is actually gathering momentum and the contestant numbers is also climbing.
Any further questions? That being all the questions, thank you very much for coming, presenting to us today. And in terms of action, we've got a watching brief again here, do we? Or councillor Ackland, you've got a question.
Really, at this stage, from my perspective as chair of community development and reserves coming in under there, that there is no actual jurisdiction or request as such within council to ban rodeos from reserves. So unless there is some desire to do that, really status quo applies.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And finally, we're probably going to have to go a little way into the time normally where community development would start, but we're allowed at least fifteen minutes, that should satisfy, I think, probably Gambling Foundation.
Mr. Chairman, that would have been the community development would have to be shorter. And we'll, I think we've about done talking about that.
Good luck.
Oh, it says at the conclusion anyway, so we don't even have a fifteen-minute rule to worry about. That's excellent, thank you very much for that. Sarah Epperson.
Yes, curata and good afternoon. Thanks for giving me some of your time today. It's, it's great to have an opportunity to speak with council about an issue that's so important to many of your constituents, as I learned when I was out at the markets collecting increasingly soggy submissions this weekend. As I was introduced, I'm Sarah Epperson. I'm a health promoter at the Problem Gambling Foundation. And as many of you will be aware already, you have an opportunity to make a decision that would lead to a healthier, safer and more vibrant Dunedin. It all starts with council making a choice. And pokies make a mockery of choice. They make a mockery of choice for a person who's addicted. They make a mockery of choice for children who know that they might have to go to bed hungry. They make a mockery of choice for families, partners who are trying to make the finances add up and can't quite figure out why they won't. Maybe the only choice that they made was that they loved a person who developed a gambling problem. One of the facts about problem gambling is we know that access exacerbates harm. And in Dunedin, we have over five hundred pokey machines outside of the casino. And these are no ordinary commodity. Poki machines are designed to be addictive and they do their job extremely well to the extent that about forty percent of regular players who play weekly or more will develop a problem at some point. For some folks, those problems are temporary. They're not great, but fortunately they're temporary. For others, for other folks, these problems can persist, they can be drawn out and they can pull people to the bottom of a very, very tall cliff. If council chooses to make a choice about the gambling policy, if the council chooses to implement a sinking lid, they would be implementing a relatively modest policy that would reduce the access of pokey machines while not doing, while not impacting existing venues. What you would be gradually impacting would be the harms of problem gambling. In two thousand and eight, about ten thousand people said they committed crimes they wouldn't have committed had it not been for someone's gambling. So in choosing a sinking lid, we make a commitment to a safer city. We know that there are mental health issues associated with problem gambling at both sides of causality. People with depression and anxiety are more susceptible to developing gambling problems. People with gambling problems are also more susceptible to developing depression and anxiety. So we could potentially improve the mental health of our city. We know that things like family violence and alcohol and drug use are also associated with problem gambling. We could be taking a stand against those things as well. We would also be taking a stand against the day-to-day stress that burdens so many families, their relationships, their finances and their time. So we've got an opportunity to make a commitment to a healthier, safer and more vibrant city. And while I'll certainly be submitting at the upcoming policy review, as I'm sure many of the colleagues that I have and people that I've spoken with will as well, I, I just wanted to make sure that there is an opportunity, if anyone had any questions, to ask me now that they could. I can either answer them here or via correspondence or via my submission. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Henrietta. Councillor Thompson.
Sarah, that's right.
Oh. Pardon me. Skip the line, my apologies, Sarah.
Sorry.
Sarah, we're only allowed to ask questions, so I can't say that I'd love to see the bloody things banned completely.
No, you can't, councillor Thompson.
But I wonder if you could tell me, in other jurisdictions around the country, have there been councils that have, well, I am aware that there are councils that have put sinking lids in place, have there been any councils who have taken it further than that and said, we're going to progressively run these out of town?
Not that I'm aware of. The strongest policies that I'm aware of are sinking lids that expressly forbid new machines, new venues and also the transfers of machines or the movements of machines from, from one venue to a new venue.
Councillor Stevenson.
Can I ask you, do you know how many councils do have a sinking lid policy in New Zealand?
Nineteen at last count.
Nineteen. And can you give me the names of any councils that are in the South that are close to us in size or location?
Sure, Christchurch, Invercargill has a soft sinking lid. Gore recently enacted a strong sinking lid that forbids transfers as well. Southland is reviewing their policy at the moment, but their, their staff had suggested a sinking lid, so we'll keep an eye on that one too.
Okay. And my other question was, like, do you have any idea of how many new applications, you know, get given through the city council here in Dunedin?
I'm not, I'm not certain. What I could provide you with is a sort of graph that would, that would display the number of machines that have gone up and down over time, if that would be helpful.
Right, yes, because I was sort of thinking, like, if over a period of time, if we had had a sinking lid, then how many would, you know, how many would increase today? And what would be the effect of having a sinking lid nineteen years ago? What would numbers, would they still be five hundred or would it be what?
Yep, I could definitely provide you something like that.
Okay, that would be pretty useful, thank you.
Councillor Ackland.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions. The first one is, is there a, a difference or a noted difference between something like a casino and venues by hotels and so on, clubs with pokey machines? But what the impact on, on problem gambling?
Well, the, the main reason that we choose to emphasise non-casino pokey machines would, would be one that we obviously can influence, that's a place where we have influence. But about seventy percent of our clients have problems with the pokey machines that are in pubs and clubs and we expect that that's because of the accessibility. There's, there's one casino in Dunedin and while there are harms associated with that, we've got forty-one venues across Dunedin that, that are very accessible to people.
So are you saying that if there were less venues, but pubs and clubs with pokey machines, that the people that really want to play and wouldn't just go to the casino or to another place?
Some people may choose to do that. Some people, the addiction is such that they're willing to, to make the extra trip. I had a conversation with, with a client of ours when I was in Christchurch getting ready to, to speak in defence of the sinking lid policy there, which was, was rolled over. And I said, you know, look, I'm, I'm getting ready to, to take a stand for this policy and I just want to know, do you think that this is the right thing to do? And he looked really thoughtful for a second and then he said, well, it would have made a difference for me. So I keep that in mind when I come to speak to councils.
And the, the other question I have is, the, my understanding out of all the money that comes in through pokey machines, is that there's quite a, a large quantum that goes to problem gambling assistance, is that correct?
So for, for every dollar that's lost in a pokey machine, about two cents of that goes into the problem gambling contracts. So that would be service providers like us at the Problem Gambling Foundation, the Oasis Centre for Problem Gambling, I think Choropo and some of the organisations like that.
But when you say two cents, to put that into perspective though, obviously there's a lot of taxes, there's a lot of costs to run these machines, they pay out a certain amount. What sort of quantum of money goes toward helping these people with gambling addictions, either on a nationwide or local level?
I'd have to get back to you.
Councillor McTavish.
Thank you. And I've got two questions. And the first is in relation to the advent of internet gambling or online gambling. Are you seeing an increasing number of clients moving over to online gambling? And do you see that as a problem in areas that have implemented the sinking lid or that have pure accessible locations?
Internet gambling is, is definitely something we worry about. It's sort of nefarious. It's, it's going to be good old-fashioned public health work that addresses the harms there. Something that's important to keep in mind is that there's absolutely no evidence that a decrease in the number of pokey machines results in a shift to other forms of problem gambling or other forms of gambling, period, actually. So I, it's, it's unlikely that a reduction in machines is going to, to lead to some sort of movement to online gambling. We still have a lot left to learn about online gambling. What makes people gamble online, what the similarities are for folks that gamble in pubs and clubs.
And my second question, the approximately five hundred pokey machines that we have around the city outside of the casino, I assume it's outside of the casino, that's right, yeah. On a per capita basis, how, how does that stack up against other centres? Is that a reasonably high level of pokey machine or is that a low? I mean, how does it, how does it rank?
I do have that, that, that data relatively handy, but I haven't compared it to other areas. I'd be happy to get that information to you though. I was going to put the ratio in my submission anyway, but I'll make sure that I include the other centres.
The other part of that question is, you know, if they're congregated in some areas as opposed to evenly spread across the city, then it may be an irrelevant question anyway because you may end up with some parts of the city that have much higher access. So, yeah, I mean, I guess it may or may not be irrelevant.
Okay, I'll be sure and address that in a little bit.
Councillor Thompson.
Most of these machines are associated with establishments that serve alcohol in one form or another. Is there any evidence that the disinhibiting effects of alcohol contribute to the likelihood of excessive gambling on machines which are in proximity to alcohol?
Yep, definitely, it's something we have a concern about. And I'm not sure about in, at the University of Otago, but certainly at the University of Canterbury, whenever we're on campus, we get a few students coming up to tell us that they, they don't usually gamble and they don't, even if they would, they didn't really want to gamble on the pokey machines, but it's something that came up for them when they were drunk and, oh, I lost, I lost all my pocket money or I cleaned myself out for the week.
I was just wondering about the pop, the population of people that do gamble and if, if students actually do occur within that population, is that something that students?
Yep, we see, we see a range of folks from, I think our youngest client was fourteen and our oldest was ninety-one. With pokey machine gambling, it primarily affects people, I believe it's in about the age range of thirty to forty. But, but it is something that people of all ages can either experience personally or they can experience the fallout of that personally.
You'll be submitting separately to this, so like, I'd be very interested in seeing what the ratio, being a student city, what the ratio of students that indicate that they've got a problem and what the vice-chancellor and the politik, what their view is on Dunedin sinking lid or not sinking lid?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay.
All right, if that's the end of questions, thank you very much, Sarah. Do appreciate you coming. Oh, sorry, councillor Woodchill.
Just make sure that councillor Wilson and I have sat out of that conversation.
Yep, certainly, all done. Thank you very much for presenting, Sarah. And that should bring us to a close, the public forum today. Sorry, we've run a little bit late, but five minutes. Sorry we've run a little bit late, but five minutes required, we break before we go into CD, is the suggestion?
Might be worth noting just in a minute that for that item, it will come forward when the, we look at our policies, there's no need to do anything here.
Mr Chairman, the question then raises is, when are we in, what is the timetable for the public consultation programme? I know it's past the last community development, I may have missed it the last couple of weeks, but when are we advertising and calling for public submissions? Can anyone tell me that programme?
We can email you.
Or can they advise us?
I'll advise you.
Okay, that's good, thank you, just a few calls.
I hope they'll advise you shortly.
Well, it's, it's just a matter of public awareness, public awareness from this to let people know that there is the opportunity for the submissions, whatever way they may wish to submit.
Make sure they're known as well.
Thank you very much, everybody. I look forward to seeing you back here twenty past. Thank you.